Okay, so what's Mr. Udale's stance? Can you go into the executive session? And just for sake of argument, Mr. Udale, I do not agree with this at all, but.
No.
Yeah, because I don't think you can take it on where your councilman's.
It's not a court.
No, but my vote's.
Not a court, he's a legislator.
No, but he's a legislator. I already had cast my vote, that's why.
Yes, well, it doesn't.
Where's Trukey? He's over in chair.
That is not a judicial.
So for Greg Firestone, he's on the chair.
It's a legislator.
All right, it is six thirty, and if I would stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I promise you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dyer, if you would call the roll?
Mayor Carney?
Here.
Mr. Senz? Here. Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Udale?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Robert?
Here.
And are there any additions or amendments to the council meeting agenda for May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three? Hearing none, agenda stays. Is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from May eighth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved. Second. Mr. Senz?
Mr. Stein?
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Udale?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
All right, I would like to have the Divine family come forward, and I will meet you around here. Councilwoman Carrie and Carrie, would you come join me as well?
Oh.
Out front, we have special proclamation to give this evening. If you do not have this family, they have an integral part of the Plain City community. And Ms. Carrie Ferguson brought forward a proposal to give them a proclamation, and specifically, Mr. Craig Divine, they are leaving to go to Texas. And so we wanted to probably face time with him, or is he not? He's over there with you right now. Okay, well, we'll go ahead, and unfortunately, he will not be able to join us at the moment, but hopefully maybe by the time you get through this, that he will be able to say. That's okay. Okay. You can hear him. Yeah, okay. Hear us. Okay. Do you want? I can make a video. Okay. Listen. Mr. Divine, here, honored to present this proclamation to you. Whereas for numerous years, Mr. Craig Divine has been involved in multiple different organizations in and around Plain City, all with the goal of serving the community. And whereas notably, Mr. Divine was the head coach for the Jonathan Alder High School Men's Soccer Team from two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two, and has previously served in other head coaching positions, always leading with integrity. And whereas Mr. Divine served as a belief physical therapist and site coordinator for Memorial Health in Plain City, helping others wherever needed. And whereas Mr. Divine has been said in many other volunteer organizations, including serving as a midform for daily needs assistance community center, volunteering with the Uptown Plain City Organization, Plain City Area Ball Association, and as well as Journey Community Church. And whereas from two thousand fourteen through two thousand seventeen, Mr. Divine served as the head athletic trainer for the Columbus Crew SC, leading a team that earned MLS honors for Training Staff of the Year two thousand fifteen. And whereas since two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Divine has been the director of Sports Medicine for the Houston Dynamo, continuing the high standard of medical care that he was exemplified in his years of coaching and employment in the medical field, overseeing all operations and staff for the medical department for the Houston Dynamo. And whereas the Village of Plain City wishes to express its gratitude and to celebrate Mr. Divine for his years of service and dedication to the village and student athletes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Carney, Mayor of Plain City, do hereby proclaim that today, the twenty-second day of May two thousand twenty-three, is a celebration of Mr. Craig Divine who is in the Village of Plain City. It's nice to share that, my husband worked with Mr. Divine as a Columbus Crew, so that time really was very much appreciated, so thank you so much. And we're sorry that you couldn't be here this evening, but wish you many years of success. Thank you. Yes, thank you. We can't like a picture with him in his first interview. Okay, and moving into the appeal portion, council review of APL dash twenty-three dash one, Appeal of the Design Review Board Decision for COA dash twenty-three dash seven, COA dash twenty-three dash three, for one oh one South Chillicothe Street, Plain City, Ohio.
Ms. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move to a private deliberation.
Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Udale?
Stein?
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
We will be going to private deliberations and come back out at this moment.
Can I join? Can I join in big session?
Frank, they're waiting for you. Mr. Reed?
Not really. I'd rather be in there.
Try check. Still have my son, who is like, check. Are you going to make it?
There you go.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Right. Long days. Yeah. Word on.
Oh, yeah? That's the walk, Paul. Check on the baseball score.
Apologize to everybody, I have to be real since graduation. But just want to be clear, this is a different proceeding than your general council meeting. This is what we call a quasi judicial process that takes place here. And there is a decision by the administrative board, and then there's an appeal of it. Those are both part of the quasi judicial process. The board, the Design Review Board and council serve both basically a judicial role, the purposes of this here and the purposes of the underlying. Okay, I thought I was speaking up right. So this is a quasi judicial hearing. That means that the council is serving a judicial role. And that's why we can have private deliberations. On the executive session, it's a private deliberation, just like judges in Court of Appeals or Supreme Court. But here, and particularly with our procedures that we have for the Design Review Board, there is an appeal, the decider here, the appellant here, so you will be able to present, and you did identify, individual identifying your issues for the appeal, or you found that you felt that the Design Review Board was in error. Mr. Robinson, your council's here, you guys, you identified, at least in a brief identifying your issues. You're the only two who are allowed to talk. This is a case where this is, you know, basically an administrative appeal, the record has been made. So the court, the council is not making a decision based on any new evidence. So new people are going to help, it's time to help them do their job. So they're relying solely on what was the record below, and then what your arguments are in front of them tonight. So there's no new evidence, anybody other than, I think you're the only appellant, and Mr. Robinson, through his counsel, will read the appeal. You guys will each have time to talk, reference anything in the book you want, reference the issues that you feel make your arguments. After that is done, council likely want to go into private deliberations so they can talk about it and basically argue about it, because that's what we do when we were at the Supreme Court, the judges all go into a conference chamber and argue about the case. They do not vote in there, they'll vote out here in public, but they're going to all have their chance to say what they want in there and discuss it, and then come out here and vote. There will not be, there'll be a vote tonight and a decision tonight, there will be a written decision of a fall that we'll get out to you after the vote tonight. So I just want to clarify for everybody to see, everybody understands this process, it's more judicial process than the normal legislative function of a council, okay? So with that, I leave you guys, I got to get off the high school. I appreciate every time. Thank you.
I believe that Ms. Cypher, you are the first up to present.
The reason that I filed this appeal was not simply because I didn't like the board's decision, but rather because I did witness three members of the Design Review Board display a complete disregard for our laws and the protections that we have established for our historic district. I really appreciated the words of Ms. Jenny Brill when she spoke at the April twenty-sixth DRB meeting, and she said that we are governed by laws and rules. And in Plain City, we have established rules that are to be followed. If you don't like the rules, then government should work to change them, but as the rules are written today, they should be followed. The details of the board's disregard for our rules are as follows, so I'll go into them. Specifically, item on the ordinance thirteen twenty-seven dot oh eight, section B, where it says that the historic character of our property shall be retained and preserved, the removal of historical materials or alteration of features and spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided. The historic character of this property will not be retained and preserved, and historic materials will be removed as well as altered that characterize this property. Since the day this building was built, it was a white butter joint brick building. These bricks have never been painted, so by painting them, you are absolutely altering them. These bricks definitely characterize this building, as it is the only structure in our uptown historic district that features white butter joint bricks. These bricks are actually considered quite rare and very historical. Adding paint to them will completely eliminate the ability to see them in their natural state. They may not be the brick of choice of two thousand twenty-three standards, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't be protected. The applicant stated that their main reason for painting these rare bricks was simply to accommodate their brand standard. I would think that the village standards and codes would trump any personal business standard. And I guess I want to make note, I watched back the live stream and took, it's nice that closed captioning, you can get the words to come up for you. But a couple of things, Ms. Ayman said, when they, board was reading this particular one, she said, this is a big one. This is where I think it's pretty clear that painting it is altering it permanently to where it can't be restored without damage to the building. Mr. Price said, the question to me is, is it a feature character or the building, or of the building, or is it just a wall? But it's definitely changing the way it looks. Mr. Udaley said, I believe the word mentioned earlier tonight was distinctive, distinctive detail. Ms. Davis then said, it's a historic type of brick that's not very common and not a lot of it around, so it's probably, and then it kind of fades out, but then she says, it's part of our mandate to preserve it. And I absolutely agree with her. Mr. Price agreed that the painting of the brick is definitely changing the way it looks, yet he voted to approve the application. He agreed that this section of the code would be violated, yet he ignored that and voted to approve the application. My next item was in section thirteen twenty-seven dot oh eight, section C. Each property shall be recognized as a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create a false sense of historical development, such as adding conjectural features or architectural elements from other buildings shall not be undertaken. The replacement of traditional windows with roll-up style windows is completely lacking in any historical basis, and in no way reflects the physical record of this building's time, place, and use. This building was built well over a hundred years ago and has mainly been used for retail. This building was built well over a hundred years ago and has mainly been used for retail. This type of window is a fad of the current times and only again alters the original character of this building. Mr. Udaley at some point during the discussion mentioned that technology also didn't exist in historical times. But I would like to say that technology is not what's about this application is about. And comparing technology to rolling doors is to me like comparing apples to zebras. They're just two different things. We use technology as a necessity today. It's just some like electricity to us today, but rolling doors are a want. They're not a necessity. The definition of the word though, I thought was interesting. Sometimes I have to look these things up, I'm just a simple person. And so the word conjectural really got me. And what is conjectural? And the definition that I could see was that it's something based on an opinion. And so I kind of reworded it so I could understand it. And the way I read the code is, does adding roll-up garage door style windows add opinion-based features or architectural elements? And the answer is a resounding yes. Mr. Scott stated that the reason he wants to make all these changes to the building is simply to reflect his brand. His brand is solely an opinion-based vision for his company and takes no consideration for historical nature or preservation of the building he will be occupying. Quite frankly, it is the board's duty to hold Mr. Scott's brand accountable to our village standards and codes. The next item in chapter 1327 dot O eight, section E. Distinctive features, finishes, and construction techniques or examples of craftsmanship that characterize a property shall be preserved. Deteriorated historic features, oh, I'm gonna go into F too, I kind of lumped these two together. Deteriorated historic features shall be repaired rather than replaced where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature. The new features shall match the old and design, color, texture, and other visual qualities and where possible, materials. Replacement of missing features shall be sustained by documentary, physical, or pictorial evidence. As I mentioned earlier in the previous section B, this building has a rare, unique, white butter joint brick that is quite distinctive feature and finish that exists nowhere else in our village. Covering them over with paint would forever alter them and would in no way preserve them. No one would ever get to see them again as they were intended by the original builder. And according to the approved minutes from the DRB, it states that the board agrees that the building is unique in its present state and that any modifications would render a change to the character. The board agrees that these comments are equally applicable in section 1327 dot O eight slash F. That is actually what it states in the actual minutes if you read them.
Ms. Seifer, I'm sorry, you didn't actually appeal 1327 dot O eight F, did you?
I didn't, I just wrote that in there because the board, when they, when they put it together, they lumped them together in their, in the minutes. And so I'm just reading to you what the board stated in the minute. So I put F in there simply to give you the foundational basis because when the minutes were written, they lumped E and F together.
Thank you.
So anyways, based on this, the board clearly agreed that painting the building would not preserve the unique character of the building. And however, three members voted to approve the painting regardless. To me, this is a clear dereliction of those three members and warrants the approval of my appeal. Mr. Price even then goes on and states with regard to section F that that does sound like physical pictorial evidence. I think once again, we had the same discussion, right? And yet, Mr. Price voted for the application to be approved, even though in these two items, he agrees that the code will be violated by painting the building. The next item was in section 1327 dot O eight, section G. Chemical or physical treatments such as sandblasting that cause damage to historic materials shall not be used. The surface cleaning of structures, if appropriate, shall be undertaken using the gentlest means possible. And this one, I, I'm not saying, I wasn't bringing this one up to say that they did vote this one in error, but rather my point for including this is to say that due to the fact that some of these, if the bricks were painted, that this line of code is, would make it impossible for someone in the future to restore the bricks back to their original state. The gentlest means possible for these bricks today is not paint, but rather a good washing, which the applicant specifically stated they were unwilling to even try. The next item in section 1327 dot O eight, section J. New additions or adjacent or related new constructions shall be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would be unimpaired. Painting the bricks absolutely qualifies as an exterior alteration as paint soaks into brick and actually changes the look and feel of a brick. The brick itself does not characterize this, I'm sorry, the brick itself does characterize the property, as I've already detailed above, and would be destroyed in its current appearance and design. And I guess I want to emphasize that word destroyed. I actually even looked up the definition of it because I thought, wow, destroyed, that seems like a really strong word. But, hold on, I put it at the end of my paper here. Destroyed is to put an end to the existence of something by damaging it. And these bricks would be damaged by painting them. In discussing, discussing section I and J, again, they lumped them together. Ms. Ayman states that installing roll-up garage doors would apply as an addition. It's an exterior alteration that does alter the building significantly. Mr. Udaley said, I don't know if it's significantly, it does alter it a little bit, but it's not significantly. And then Ms. Ayman says they didn't have roll-up garage doors. And that's then when Mr. Udaley mentioned the technology issue. But then he goes on to say, so yes, it's not historical, but again, they're making it look a whole lot better. Mr. Udaley admits that these changes aren't historical and that in his opinion, the applicant is making the building look better and functional for what they need. This code is supposed to expressly protect these buildings from people wanting to change them simply to meet their own needs. The very essence of the board is to stand up for the preservation over vanity. The needs and wants of any tenant or building owner in the historic district shouldn't supersede the code. Yet that is exactly what Mr. Udaley allowed with his yes vote. And then in section 1327 dot O nine, section A. Existing structures and premises. Reconstruction or rehabilitation within the historic district shall conform to the distinguishing original exterior qualities per character of the structure, its site, and its environment, which convey its historical, cultural, or architectural value. By painting the brick as a form of rehabilitation of the building, there would be no attempt to conform the building's original exterior qualities or a character of the structure. These unique white butter joint bricks do convey its historical, cultural, and architectural value and should be celebrated and cleaned rather than covered up and lost forever. And roll-up windows in no way reflect the original exterior quality of the building, but only bend to the ever-changing times. These are the very things we strive to protect against, the erosion of what was to make way for what is hip and trendy. And if each generation came along and painted over the previous generation's architecture, we would never get to enjoy the beauty and distinction of the past. And again, that is the very reason that chapter 1327 was added to our code, to ensure that our historical district would be one that could be enjoyed for generations to come. And if we continue to ignore our own code, we will no longer have the historical diversity of architecture in our community. Additionally, due to the fact that the board decided on April 13th to delay their vote, Mr. Lafayette did instruct the board not to discuss the matter as the hearing was still open. I did state in the April 26 meeting that Mr. Cron did approach me on Saturday, April 15th to discuss the hearing. And he made comments like, don't be surprised if I vote for it, which gave you the impression that he intended to pass it along regardless of further discussion to be held April 26th. He also seemed more concerned about the amount of money the applicant was spending in our community rather than the historical value and the DRB standards he was tasked to uphold. It did occur to me after he spoke, actually friends said to me, that perhaps he shouldn't have spoken to me due to the solicitor's comments about not discussing the hearing. So I did feel like I should bring it up during the April 26 meeting, but the solicitor didn't comment on the matter. And then also, due to the fact that the board delayed the hearing, I did think that it was negligent that the board president Todd Boyer was present. He was present for the April 13th meeting, but then not at the concluding proceedings on April 26th. And during the April 13th meeting, he was very vocal about not painting the building. He basically said it was a non-starter for him and that it didn't seem right to me that he wasn't there for the final vote. In conclusion, I guess I want to say, I, I count that there are at least four definitive instances. Specifically, 1327 dot O eight, sections B, E, F, and G, where the minutes specifically state that the board agreed that the code set forth in those sections would not be met or would be in breach of the code. It is clear then that the three members who subsequently voted to approve the application disregarded the code. I am asking that council enforce their authority over the board and correct their obvious error. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Seifer. Mr. Robinson, counsel?
Good evening. May it please, counsel, my name is Attorney Alicia Zambelli. I'm with the law firm of Walter Haverfield, address 175 South Third Street, Suite 290, Columbus, 43215. I'm going to be very brief and then turn the podium over to Mr. Robinson because Ms. Robinson knows through and through all of the considerations that he and his business partner have made in trying to maintain.
Just one question for quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You only get one representative to speak for each side. So you can either continue with your comments or you can have Mr. Robinson. Ms. Robert Robinson, do you feel as though your points as to the factual matters of the application are thoroughly briefed and that the city council can completely, you know, be briefed based on the petition itself?
Okay, I think so as well. Okay. And I apologize, yeah, Attorney Lafayette had not told us we would be limited to one. But I'll, I'll touch, not to waste anyone's time, Mr. Robinson fully briefs the factual matters of, of the application. So the key points here are that this is a, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think you're, you are either allowed to, like he can get up and speak or you can continue to speak.
I, I understand, I will proceed with speaking.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
And we will rely on the fact that an appellee's brief was filed on Friday that has been disseminated to the city council and that city council will be able to more fully read the brief. But I'll, I'll just touch on kind of the high points of that. So I think the key takeaway from this evening is that this is a somewhat new standard that city council has been briefed on by Attorney Lafayette. We are not under what is called a de novo review. In, in this standard, it's an arbitrary and capricious standard of review, meaning that the, the design review board, which has been created by the Village of Plain City, has been given the task of evaluating applications such as the subject application and rendering an opinion. And but for a violation of a very higher standard of review, arbitrary and capricious, that the city council should not overturn the decision. So basically, and I know Attorney Lafayette will brief the council more thoroughly on the defined term, but basically, an arbitrary and capricious standard is willful and unreasonable action without consideration or regard for the facts and circumstances. Clearly, the design review board followed and carefully considered the Village of Plain City code in approving the applicant's application. So first of all, the proposed color of painting the brick is an approved color. Second of all, the city code does not prohibit painting brick. And I think most importantly, that there have been two other projects within the Village of Plain City over the years. One for Mr. Medici. And to be fair, I believe that the approval was made before Mr. Medici owned the, the building, located at 121 West Main Street. And then a second project by Mr. Dawson, the granary, at 138 West Main Street. Those properties being owned by entities of those individuals as principals. There was painted brick on both of those projects. And they are also within the approved color scheme of the Village of Plain City's code. So I think by and large, the takeaway here would be that the village has previously approved painted brick, the code does not prohibit it. And when applicants have made requests that have fallen within the previously approved color scheme, the design review board has approved that. So the takeaway here would be that Mr. Robinson and his business partner have tried very, very hard in putting together an application that is thoughtful, keeping with the general architectural charm and, and character of the building, but with permissible updates. This is not a registered historical building, but it is, of course, within the historical district. And the applicant is trying to be a good steward of the community and certainly not proposing radical deviations from the current structure. And over the years, the structure of the building has been changed several times. The point being, a simple request of certain window coverings that have been previously approved of other projects and a color scheme, a painted brick that has been previously approved and is within the approved color scheme, that the request is simply in line with what other applicants have previously made to the Village of Plain City and which have had approved. So our takeaway would be that it would be in line with the design review board's prior decision in approving the application. And what would be arbitrary and capricious is would be city council overturning the design review board's prior decision in favor of the application when the village has previously approved similar applications. That would be arbitrary and capricious, not in line with the previous decisions and treatment of prior applicants. We would respectfully ask that village council uphold the design review board's prior decision and allow the applicant to move forward with its proposed work to the project. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question.
Of course.
I've heard a question about, there's not any really directly specific language in the code which says you can't put garage doors in the building. That language is not in the code.
That is my understanding.
Would you agree that there is language in the code that would bring the replacing of windows with garage doors under the jurisdiction of the code?
I believe that when the code is silent to a specific revision to a building, that it falls squarely within the interpretation of the design review board. That is why the design review board has been put together with individuals that have the willingness and interest in the community and the code and the architectural standards and certainly keeping the historic nature and charm of Village of Plain City. So when there are, it's not unusual, the code can't address every proposed revision, you know, restoration or, or change to a building. So that is why, you know, a board such as the design review board is in existence. And we, you know, give them the task to use their best judgment to determine whether a request that does not fall with, you know, squarely within either a permitted or prohibited action is in the best interest of the code and the community. And I think that's exactly what the design review board did, that they, they felt that it was not in, you know, in, in violation of, of the code. It was, it could be, you know, it could be married to the historical charm of the building and, and could, and those standards could be maintained despite using a newer material or a newer design standard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is there a motion to go into private deliberations?
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Edaly?
abstained.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
We will return.
Because they have more knowledge about it than anybody in this. But... Is that how the process works?
I used to go get my gas there all the time, and I would get it from you.
Do you still have that truck?
That's what I want.
She will do that, but she's in school. She's taking an interest in this for a minute, so she can see over there, and she said, that way she can see, teach, and exchange. That's the whole thing. You are your ideas. So we... So we... So we should make it possible. Easy. Because in the summer. But then we came here. I just had a meeting. Can we push? Because they have a lot of... I mean, we're all living around this world. Because you show me a lot of... I'll put it there. Where'd it go? Okay, so non-compartment just has... Rock means notorious to tyrants for some reason. That's what you know. You don't want to build a non-compartment. Punnies will do non-compartment because they say it's cheaper than pins. Was originally the intention, maybe twenty twenty five. It's not actually... It's good for sort of the difference is you get three, it's not four, six minutes. You put some wash on it? Look at Chris. The bridge in two years. He's a... I think it was projects. I told him better make a great out of this project or I'm going to lie. He likes to go like... A word load up.
Is there a motion to grant the appeal of APL twenty one, twenty three dash one, excuse me?
So moved.
Set. Mr. Dyer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sims?
No.
Mr. Terry?
Down.
Mr. Yedder?
See.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
No.
Motion fails three to two. That concludes the appeal portion of our agenda this evening. We're moving on into the visitors' section. Which, Mr. Dyer, I know we have a long list of visitors.
First I have Barry Thomas.
Just let me take a minute. Saturday, my niece had a graduation party at the youth building in the park. And there was three other bunches over there at different places having the same thing. And three gentlemen came up to me, and I don't know why they came to me. One was from Greenville, Ohio, and I didn't know these people. One from Akron area, one up around Cleveland, and had told me they had never seen a park so nice looking as that park was. So I guess I want to give a shout out to the boys that do that kind of stuff, you know? It was nice, but I didn't even know these people. Still don't know them. But and how, why would they come and talk to me about it? I was at my nieces'. Anyway, that's all I got to say. I just want to tell you that there are people that enjoy looking in a nice place like that, you know? All I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and thank you for giving our Public Works Department and Parks and Rec Department a compliment.
They do a good job. I mean, the park, it was beautiful. It was just manicured. So anyway, those three people, I didn't even know them. They'd never been here before.
It's wonderful to have visitors through our town that enjoy Plain City, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris Kirk?
He's not here.
I have all the rest of the people here who are being hanged, right? I believe the last name is C O O L or K. First and first and L.
Cook? Did you say Cook?
Yeah.
Is there a last name of Cook here?
All right, and then this Zambelli, again, some of these were people who designed the needle. And then this Pati Flowers.
You don't have to stand if you don't want.
Yeah, you don't.
That's all right. I like to stand. I appreciate standing up and addressing you. Um, first of all, I'm not very happy with your vote. You probably know that. Because what you've done is basically said that the code is not worth anything. That's what you basically said, because everything here was hypothetical, and that's the way it was chose, how it was decided. I recognize why you need to do it, because the design and review board should be the last word on everything. Because you've given them the authority to do that. But council, this design and review board is not doing their job. They're doing a lousy job. They've already ruined one building. And you're now going to ruin the clock. Because you need to train them. There is a criteria. The reason why that historical district was formed was to secure and save that section. So that it could remind us of what we were. I am the oldest person in this room and the oldest living resident here. I have lived here sixty plus years. I know what this town is all about, and I would say fifty percent of the people are going to hate you right now. Maybe fifty percent will be cheering. I don't know. But you have thrown out your rules. You've got to get these rules back together. I don't know whether the board needs to be trained, they need to understand the rules. You cannot do it on whether you like something or dislike something, or that somebody spent a lot of money in town and somebody hasn't spent a lot of town. We're wanting to save the historical part of this town. You under... This society that we live in, we're like Coke cans. We just throw them away. And we have something very valuable here. And you're not recognizing that. And I'm going to be dead someday until it won't really even matter to me, you know? But I don't want to see the future generation. What are you going to do with... What are you going to tell your kids that you did? You put garage doors in an iconic history-built historical building. You painted it dark green because it's the cool in thing right now. It's kind of like in the sixties, we had shag rugs. Because this is going to fade just like everything else. We have roundabouts now. Okay, everything's new though. Got to be new and up to date. Really? It's not good. And you're hurting a lot of things, more than you realize. Seriously. Please go deeper. I'm passionate. You better believe I'm passionate. You're hurting something that I love very much. I moved into this town as a young bride. I didn't want to be here. I'm from Columbus. You know, I want to know where the dime store is and where that this is and that is. But you know what I found? I found a safe community. A community that I could let my kids ride their bicycles uptown to go to the pool. You think I'm going to do that today? No, no, I'm not. I'm scared for them. We don't live in that state community. You know, we're drawing a lot of wrong kind of people. Right now, we are drawing them. And you already have seen what the short north is looking like, and we can begin to look almost like it. You say, "You're exaggerating." No, 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 I'm not. I'm hurting. I'm hurting because of what you've, what you're doing. I love this town. I grew to love it with all my heart. My husband built the bicentennial park in nineteen seventy six. He bought, he did it without any, any tax money, anything. All of it was volunteer. Why? Because we love this little town. So you got tax money, you got this kind of things, you're doing all kinds of things, but you're starting to do the wrong kind of things. And I have to say it, and I have to be passionate about it because you hurt my heart. And, you know, I don't want to be like this, you know? I really don't. Because I think you're all good people. I think you want to do your job. You're on there, you've chosen to be on council, then do something about it. Stand up to something. Can you do that? You've got, you've got to bite the bullet. And this thing of being scared of not saying things because of so and so and so and so and so and so. Come on, it's been that way all my life. You know it, and I know it. Somewhere, somebody's got to stand up. And I've been standing up for a long time. I'm standing up. I will stand up. And I will come against the things that I think that are wrong, and this decision's wrong. See, you worry me because what are you going to, what are you going to grab a hold of when you want to make a good, strong ruling? Because we're living by that criteria and by that kind of rules. And when you throw them out the window, just for a what? I'm not quite sure. You got to think it over. You've just got to think it over. It's not, it's not a good thing. Anyway, I thank you very much for listening to me. I really hope you listen to me. You know, you all... I'm banking on you for my kids and my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren. This is my granddaughter. I'm very, very proud of her. She knows what's valuable. I hope it's coming from me. I'll be notch as good parents. But I hope that you can hear what I'm saying and take it to heart and feel a little bit sad for what you did tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, Ina.
I'm sorry, Ina.
No, that's all right. All right. My name's Ina Medici. Thank you for listening. I just would like to address my disappointment in the results of this appeal. It is extremely disappointing that you turned this down. It was very clear that the board did not do what they were asked to do, and I think that the fact that the response to the appeal, I find very interesting that it was sent to the design review board on April twentieth, and they made a decision on April twenty sixth. And the vast majority of the comments in here are grossly misstated. I can give a few examples. Things like, "Oh, this building was painted before." Well, sure, in the fifties or in the forties, when there was no design review board, I hardly think that is relevant. Other things like, "Oh, well, the board approved a painted building in the historic district." No, the board did not approve that. That was approved by a terrible village administrator that didn't understand the rules. That building, the granary, let's just call it what it is, it was painted outside of the purview of the design review board, and I'm sure Mr. Rucker can attest to that.
And that was actually mentioned, so...
Thank you. So I just, I find the documentation here that was the response to the appeal hideously incorrect, and none of that was brought up. I also think that it's very bad timing, or at least it appears to be rather poor timing, that the impetus to this talked all about the economic benefit that this new tenant was going to bring to the town, and it happened to show up on the twentieth of April to the design review board, six days before they made their decision. So my comment, I guess, really is, what's the point of the historic district? And what is the point of the design review board if you are going to constantly overrule the rules that are guiding that design review board? If the design review board members don't know what they're doing, they should be asked to leave. Because clearly, they are not doing the right thing in there. Because clearly, they are not doing the right thing and they're not following the rules that were stated. They are not following the guidelines that were provided. And further, if you don't like those guidelines and you don't like those rules, change them. You are the council. You have the power to make those changes. If you don't want a historic district, get rid of it. And then, when you have the Polaris Amphitheater on your front doorstep and no one wants to live here anymore, then we can look back on this time and realize the mistakes that were made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ina.
Mr. Robert Chandler. I have presents for you. Because I actually thought it was going to be a chance to speak tonight, or at least be called up as a a person who understands the design review board since I was a chairperson for a while. And I spent my entire working career restoring old buildings. And I'm probably the only person in this room who's ever read and reread the code, the guidelines that you guys are supposed to follow. I guess disappointed doesn't even begin to cover my point. This is probably the sixth or seventh time I've actually had to come up and talk about painting a brick building. I just don't understand. I honest to God, I flat out don't understand. This is plain English. There is no example in that Secretary of Interior's guidelines, not one on any page that says it's okay. Not one. And I'm just stunned. Am I the only person who can read? I take that back. There are people who voted against this. But my point stands. This should be a no-brainer. This should be zoning. When if that application hits the desk, he should take this and flip it right to him and say, "Code says no." I spoke with Mr. Robinson about it. He asked me what my opinion was. I said, "There is no circumstance when it's okay. That's what the code says. That's what the ordinance says." And anybody on the design review board who is doing what they're mandated to do will turn it down. Regardless of whether you like it. Because liking has nothing to do with being on that board. That board is there for the protection of the community, the protection of all of us, the protection of the building owners, the protection of the businesses, the protection of the history. You guys need to clean house or get rid of it. Clean house. You're the only person in this room who can do that. You need to take a serious look at that design review board and ask them, "Who's read this? Who has read this?" Better yet, ask them what section applies to this application. There are four different sections in there. A lot of it looks like duplicates if you not pay attention to what you're reading. You'll be reading the wrong section. And it won't be applicable. I'm just horrified that, well, one, that we had an attorney mischaracterize me as painting a brick building. That's a new one on me. If an example has been set, and that was part of their argument, there are previous examples that this is okay. What you did tonight was say, "We will throw out every rule if you bring money to town." You sold your soul tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Medici.
Mr. Dan, I apologize. I'm new E P Z L.
How's it going, guys? I'll try to keep it short and sweet. To say you sold your soul to any of you, that's exaggerating to the fullest. This town is growing. It, you know, that sweet little lady that was up here, I don't know her name. I feel bad. I feel bad for her. But it's changed. And we're not talking about tearing down buildings. We're not talking about anything. And I wasn't even here, excuse me, to really talk about that. I was going to hear, come here and say, you know, I read the crowd and I realized they would probably be talking about the sound at the Polaris Amphitheater. That is a complete joke. You have a nice barbecue restaurant that is drawing people to your town, that is walking down the sidewalks, that are shopping in all the shops. What you need to consider is how we stopped Plain City from exceeding eighty-five hundred people. Because once you go over the ten thousand mark, then you're going to have the big box stores. That should be everybody's concern. But we're complaining about painting a brick building, about garage doors that's going to house hundreds of people to come and spend money in this town, thousands? What are we doing here? Do you guys want progress? Do you guys want to be a nice town that everybody comes to? Look at Plain City ten years ago. Hushard Building, Hushard, it was almost fallen in the street. It looked like downtown Beirut. That's a famous quote my dad said. Plain City looked like downtown Beirut. It was embarrassing to have people and friends drive in to my dad's house and to my house because it was so disgusting to look at. And these people are coming in here, and Race, and Tim, and everybody, and they are spending a lot of money. But they're making it look nice. They're making it enjoyable for people my age. I'm sorry, I'm not seventy, eighty years old and don't want to hear noise. It's not realistic. People like to go have a beer. They like to go drink a barbecue or eat a barbecue sandwich. You know, this isn't the eighteen hundreds. You have to adapt. And I feel sorry for the people that live right next door to the granary. It's unfortunate. But at this point, if you don't like it, move. Because I have a list of ten friends that would move into that house right now. And, you know, it'll be on the Just Plain news here pretty soon, you know. Tyler's telling residents to leave town. You know, come on. It's shameful on them.
I would like to certify one point. It was Nick Kennedy who said it looked like downtown Beirut.
It probably.
I was at that meeting. I was at Rock decide when he said it.
All right. I have a couple things. Number one, I thought the dedication to Craig Devine was awesome. So thanks for doing that. That dude's amazing. My second thing is I want to publicly apologize to Denton Kits. He's not here, I don't think. Because I let my nice meter boil one day. And he took the brunt of that. So Denton, if you're listening or watch this, I apologize. That was probably an appropriate thing and got the- the emotion got the best of me there, so. I wanted to do that publicly because he didn't deserve that. From there, I also want to thank you for making the decision you did tonight. Listen, I know change is hard, okay? It is. Time stops for no man. You know, we're trying to do things strategically that benefit this community for the long term yet again, right? History is something that gets built over and over and over and over and built upon, right? And it's this long, drawn-out story and legacy. And as a Plain City-born and raised guy, you know, I'm actually not ashamed of what you're doing. I'm actually proud of that. And I'm more proud to be a part of it. To be in a position, to go work hard, to make money, to do those things, and to also positively influence the community in which I live and which I was born and raised. So I'm very proud of those things that we're doing. And I think that you can see that in all of the projects that we're doing downtown. So some of you that have been in Front Porch home know the type of finished work and branding that we're bringing to our projects, right? Those of you that joined for the fire station opening the other day absolutely saw the finished product of that. And I am absolutely damn proud of this project. So I'm going to be just as proud for this project when we're done. And it's not just about two walls of the building that we're talking about. We're talking about preserving the history of the inside of the building as well, the south side of the building with the artwork, and bringing people to come into the place and enjoy all the things that Perry's Hardware Store provided a long time ago, and Howland Hardware before that, and Kaiser Bartow before that. So I am absolutely thrilled that we're able to do the things that we're doing. And I cannot wait to continue to do more because these kinds of things aren't going to stop me from continuing to positively impact the community. Okay, so I love Plain City. I love Jonathan Alder, just like Patty Flowers. Albeit, she disagrees with this decision. She disagrees with me. But I would love nothing more than to sit down and have coffee with her one day, if she's even willing to, and talk about some of my plans and why I'm doing the things I'm doing. But I've never heard from her and I've never known that lady before in my life, so. Anyways, I just wanted to call some of those things out and, again, if I, if I thought that painting two walls of a four-wall building and doing some things that can be removed down the road were actually going to harm the building long-term, we probably wouldn't do it, okay? So that's been my commitment to Plain City. That will continue to be my commitment to Plain City. And there's a reason that I went to the Historical Society to get their approval before we even friggin' submitted the submission, right? So I'm trying to proactively, positively do all the right things throughout these processes. Follow your rules, follow your processes, and take the high road, except for when I lost Michael with Denton Kits. And again, I apologize to Denton because I know that was ill-advised, so anyways. Thank you for being reasonable, evaluating, and giving us the opportunity to continue to bring positive impact and change and new things to Plain City that we deserve, so. Appreciate you.
I can go real quick, just because I thought of something as we were sitting here. So Race was born and bred, raised here. And my family has been here for many, many, many years. And my grandfather was Jack Faust. And one of the stories that he liked to tell that kind of made me think about this, that I always, as a kid, kind of didn't believe him, I guess is the way to put it, is that on Saturdays, they would drive the car up on Saturday morning to park it on the street because his grandmother wanted a prime spot. And Saturday nights, the street was so busy that if you didn't park your car up there in the morning, you didn't get a spot. And to think, especially when I was a kid, twenty years ago, that you couldn't get a spot uptown anytime would have just, you know, I couldn't believe it, that it was, there were so many people that wanted to be there and the community was together. And I, through all this growth and this, I just, I see that. I see that happening. And it's amazing. So I just really kind of want to give you guys kudos for that. And I know it's the growing pains and it's all, it's a hard thing to do. But I can see it coming back. And I know that he would be so excited, as many other community members are, to see that where we can all come together in our little town where everybody's not leaving to go to Dublin or go to Columbus, or that kind of stuff, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
Ms. Stephanie Sacher.
Stephanie La, okay.
And that's it all.
That's it, okay. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us through this process. We will be continuing into the rest of our meeting. Moving into reports, I know that emotions have been running high, especially in the village. And I want to take this opportunity to talk about, you know, council, at least I can speak for myself that as an elected official, I try to really find that balance between residence and business because you can't have one without the other. And I think it's imperative that, moving forward, that we can really find that common ground to come together because a divided community is definitely not what anybody wants. So since our last meeting, I participated in an economic development breakout session with Councilman Michael Terry and Councilwoman Carrie Ferguson, along with Chief Mark Kidd, which I don't see him anymore. Oh, here, I'm sorry, you're.
Nobody puts Mark in a corner.
Yes, you took the words right out of my mouth. For the economic development strategy and really, they have been having focus groups the day that we all met and our was, were the municipal leaders to really talk about like what business strategy we should have for Plain City so that it can help guide our future. What do we want to be identified as? I know from technology to our agriculture heritage and, you know, attracting those types of businesses that will really take us into the future and help us balance out this residential growth so that we do have the right businesses here. So I appreciate being able to be a part of that breakout session. I support the Plain City Lions Club and Jonathan Alder Leo Clubs, the annual pancake breakfast at Pastime Park. If you have not got a chance to get pancakes and sausage cooked by the Lions Club, it is definitely, I think my kids ate four pancakes that day. You know, I saw the Robinsons there. Lots of people, Mr. U Daly stopped by because your son's a Leo Club member. So that was a great event for our community. I chaperoned the third grade field trip to Darby Township Cemetery where Ms. Rose Mary Anderson, a lifelong resident and member of the Plain City Historical Society, taught all third graders about Plain City's history. And as I am there in the Darby Township Cemetery, just hearing the stories of our forefathers and the heritage and the founding families, I found it very interesting how many of our founding families traveled here in the promise of a new start and land for their families. And I think about so many of the people that come to Plain City, whether they grew up here their entire lives or, and came back, or the people who find our town an enjoyable place to live and start their family. That was a really great tie. So I appreciate our school district really teaching our children about the history of Plain City so that they can appreciate it. Attended the ribbon cutting for Richwood House Blues, the station, and it is a beautiful building that keeps the historical structure along with modern elements. I was blown away that all the historical pictures that it depicted throughout the property and to bring to our visitors and showcase it. So I appreciate being a part of that. And then on Thursday, Friday, I attended the grand opening of Richwood Coffee located at Richwood Bank. So if you've never gotten a chance to have coffee in a bank, all the proceeds of coffee sales go to support local charities such as DNA, Jonathan Alder Local Schools, Madison County Humane Society, I think Union County, United Way. There's a lot, so. Stop in there. They open at seven AM and then they close thirty minutes before the bank closes, so. Really good coffee. Saturday morning, I attended coffee with council and friends with, so that was exciting. I got to stop in. It was at the police station. I'm not going to steal the council president, Sense's thunder there. I know I have a lot, but it's been a very busy couple of weeks. The rededication of the Edwin C. McCabe Memorial Garden at the Plain City Public Library. The family contributed to the first garden in nineteen ninety-six. And then again, with the refurbishing of the new garden that has recently taken place this past year. All of the original hardscape was reused in the new garden. I thought that was fantastic, that example of recycling and upcycling. It also has a little library for community sharing of books. There will be an addition of a bicycle rack, which I was glad to hear for uptown. And then that got to me in thinking, like, I know we've had many conversations about the addition of bicycle racks to, more bicycle racks to encourage healthy living within our community. After the library event, I presented a proclamation to the celebration that the Daughters of the American Revolution was hosting for the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam and Vietnam-era war veterans. This organization, to which I am also a member of, asked if we could have something prestigious given to many veterans who need to be recognized. And I felt honored to be a part of it. And then this morning was the first video podcast for Mondays with the mayor. And I know council president Sense is going to talk more about it, but I want to give a big thank you to James Sense for helping this vision come to fruition. It started out as an idea to just do a Facebook livestream for updates and introduce staff members to the community. And I am big on trying to be as transparent as possible of things that's happening in the community. And Mr. Sense said, "Let's kick it up a notch and allow for you to communicate with people who may be watching it as a livestream." I will tell you, I am not technologically advanced. I feel like I'm on that part of it. And I want to thank him for all the time that he is taking and helping to bring this communication to our village for, from filming to editing to getting it set up. Because I wouldn't be able to do it. So thank you for the time on your project. And this weekend, the Plain City Aquatic Center opens. And Monday is the annual Memorial Day Parade. Lineup starts at nine AM and the parade begins at ten with it ending at Forest Grove Cemetery. We invite all of you to come out and pay your respects to the men and women who fought to give us our freedoms. So as we go into this weekend, I want to appreciate those men and women that laid down their lives for our country and for us to have the freedom of speech to get up and talk about what makes us passionate.
The route of that parade, just so people know, which way is it going? Because most people know it's just downtown, but what is this? This one isn't.
That's, it is.
The parade route was actually changed this year.
Oh, it was?
Oh.
It's leaving North, the north entrance of Pastime Park.
Okay.
Okay, it headed south on South Shore Path Street. Usually, they don't go to elementary school and go to. Usually they don't go elementary school and go through town, then right to south, but it's actually the north entrance of Pastime Park.
And I'll still stop at Darby Township Cemetery and then continue on. So if you would like to, you can watch the parade or meet at the cemetery because you will have to find your own way back um after, after the, the ceremony. But um lots of work is going into it, into the ceremony and it's something that I feel like really makes our town special by having this. Um, it's something you can't really describe, just walking down to Chillah Coffee Street and watching the procession, so. With that, I apologize for the long-winded report, but again, a lot has been happening. And I'm gonna turn it over to, and this is on as good as our finest director, Chief McKee.
Well, I was gonna mention the moral of the parade, but.
So sorry, reiterating it for everybody.
And then, I just want to keep it short too. Lastly, I don't usually talk about cases or um outcomes or anything like that, but if you guys remember, you're, almost a year ago, sorry, I believe it's almost been a year ago, that we had a shootout with Mr. Lee Master um on the east side of town. Uh, today, he was, he was sentenced to eighteen years. So I want to thank Prosecutor's Office, Mass County, for all the work on that. Um, just listening to some of the impact statements from the officers, I didn't realize how much of an impact it did have on them. So it was kind of good to hear those. Um, it's just, especially when you hear Officer Hertzinger talking about his wife was, you know, forty-eight hours from labor. She knew that he was there that night to get shot, and he could feel the bullets from the buckshot hit his heel with boots that night. It just made it more real. Um, so anyhow, I just want to thank the Mass County Prosecutors, the Office of Defense, and also Union County Sheriff's Office, Mass County Sheriff's Office, and the State Highway Patrol for all the work that night and helping us out, and Mary's Hope Police Department.
Anybody else going out to the community?
What's that?
Anybody else going out to the community? You guys.
Thank you, Chief McKee. And I also want to say that last week was um uh Police Week and I really appreciate Sergeant Prather. He um, yeah, I feel like you're, the Plain City Police Department does great outreach. If you need something or um, whether, I always ask like, hey, can you give the Cub Scouts or the Girl Scout a tour? They're always willing to step up. This time it was my outreach group, uh Clover Buds, and they got a chance to tour the, the station and take some mug shots along the way too. But um appreciate all the, the education um that, that, and outreach that you do for our community, so thank you. Um, Mrs. Lepton, Village Administrator.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I would like to take this time to introduce our new staff members. Um, we have Colin Powers, he's our new zoning specialist. So if you see him out uh taking care of property maintenance complaints, you can give him a wave. He'll, he'll be in the Jeep for the most part. Um, and he will be one of the first faces you see when you come into the office. We also have Cameron Dos, she's our development intern for the summer. Um, she's here from Ohio State, the Planning Department. And uh Place Through Morpsy, we're really excited to have her, she's working on a lot of fun projects. Uh, it's National Public Works Week. So, you know, as always, thanks to our crew and I'll pass along the message from Mr. Thomas, I think it's great timing. Um, they, a lot of hard work uh goes into keeping the village a beautiful place. And uh the wastewater treatment plant expansion bid came in Thursday, it was two percent of the engineer's estimate, so that bid will be going back out later this week.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. And council president, Mr. Sense.
We had a coffee council, coffee with council and friends. I just call it CCF because it's easier to say, but coffee council friends. And this past week, on Saturday, we were at the police station and I thank Chief McKee for making that such a special event, though there were no mug shots. I think nobody got fingerprinted, we did get a tour, so thank you so much for that. It was a really good conversation, we had a good mix of residents there. And uh, and sometimes the conversations can be tough and sometimes there's lots of laughter and sometimes there's, it's just a good time, so, uh, and informative. So if you get an opportunity to come to these, we're trying to do them a couple of times a month. And uh I'm sure Richwood Bank will be in there, the coffee place there, and every other place in town that we can get to.
Well, speaking of coffee, I got that stain.
Yes, I spilled a cup of coffee on the floor. I did spend a lot of time trying to clean it up. Before anybody saw, but I don't care, thank you. They talked about tasing me, but.
Smells better.
For charity.
Yeah, uh, also with the, with the uh council president, we have our June work session coming up on June first. We moved that from the first Wednesday of the month to apparently the first Thursday, but that's to accommodate some staff, some of the council members not being available. So uh I do know that the noise ordinance is going to be something we're gonna talk about. And just to be transparent in work sessions, it's typically a council work session. We don't usually have public comments, so it's not a, it's not a public forum in that case. But people are welcome to come and listen and hear the discussions that we're having. And encouraged to come and listen to the discussions we're having. And that is all I have for, I do, I do want to say, because I just want to make this about your, the videos. So a lot, some people play golf, apparently I make videos and I don't do it professionally and I probably do it as well as most people play golf, so, which is probably not very good. But uh it is a good opportunity to uh give back to the village in, in another way that is uh just something that I enjoy doing and by no means it's promised, but it's certainly fun to do, so thank you. Uh, I'm done with my report.
Well, I appreciate that because I, again, I do not have the, the technology background that you do, so. Um, law director.
Evening, I have nothing to report on tonight.
Thank you. Communications and Marketing Advisory Committee.
All right, so first, you got this bag of, you can see these lapel pins? So we have lapel pins, so when we go and visit other uh areas around the city or even with other, like Union County, Madison County, you know, they always have like, like twenty pins, like look at that, like we have a pin now. So I'm very, I'm very excited about this. Um, we uh, yeah, you can come see, I got a bag of them, I'll come to you. Maybe you can have one? I don't actually know why I have a whole bag of them, it's probably to give them out or to pour them.
Trade.
Yeah, trade for other pins. Anyways, I'm excited about that. So Communication Advisory Committee, we also met at the library this past week um on two, not this Tuesday, last Tuesday. And we had an opportunity to see their maker space and that was exciting to see, and that's why we met there this time. Um, and then we've already talked about Mondays with the mayor, that's a initiative that we're doing, just these videos that get more information about Plain City and really uh to communicate better, right? That's the whole purpose of that committee, is to figure out how we can make sure that residents know what's hap- residents and business, residents and business owners know what's happening in Plain City and how we communicate as a council and as a village staff out to our residents and also receive feedback, so it's all connected, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sense. Board of Zoning Appeals?
Nothing.
Planning and Zoning Commission, we met on May seventeenth. We had a conceptual uh meeting with the Virginia Homes Project um for Beechey Farms. And um we also had our two uh temporary planning and zoning uh members join us for that meeting as well. Um, we did have the rezoning of the spot off, for, it is called the Spot, um, off of forty-two. And so that will be coming, and I'm looking at Mr. Hutchison just for reassurance, but um that will be coming back for a conceptual meeting, or they already did their conceptual meeting.
Yeah, they're looking in next for their preliminary.
Preliminary development plan, yes, so that is moving forward. Oh, um, which later on we will be setting, um, having a motion to set the public hearing for that. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, our next meeting is the second Tuesday of June. And in the meantime, uh, Parks is, is working on, we have a, an event scheduled, which is a kickoff of Music in the Park, which happens on June the fourth. It's called Bluegrass and Barbecue. It's a pretty much fun event, there'll be music all day from twelve noon until seven. So if you want to eat lunch out there and be entertained while you're doing it, then come out to, on June fourth, to, to Bluegrass and Barbecue. Um, and then we have regular Sunday, uh Music in the Park at seven PM on Sunday. But we'll keep you updated on, on that schedule. The schedule is actually on the website if you want to click on the Parks and Rec event schedule. It's, it's pretty much up to date uh now, and it shows all the events upcoming for the entire year. So you just click on the public or the Parks and Recs thing and then there's a link right there in front of you. Just click on it and you'll see the event schedule for the year, um, dates and times. So other than that, the next thing that the Parks people are gonna be doing is planning and executing the Fourth of July in, in conjunction with everybody else in the village. You know, it takes all hands on deck to get that thing uh, you know, executed. Uh, but we're really looking forward to, to the July fourth. And I suspect it's gonna be on July fourth this year, so whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Um, Tree Commission, do we have an update?
Yeah, I have a quick staff report. Um, they met for the first time on May ninth, um, did the elections, covered duties and responsibilities. Um, the OGNR Forester was there, and then the next steps will be to review and discuss the tree ordinance that will eventually come to town.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. Personnel and Finance slash CIP?
Nothing to report.
Fire Board?
Nothing to report. Wait, I wanna, did you go to the last one or did I go to the last one?
I think, well, yeah.
Well, we also have Chief Kidd.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Go to the last one, sorry. He wasn't even there.
We have our, we have our next meeting, next Friday, or next Thursday, that was what I was gonna say.
Yep.
June first.
Yeah, so we're gonna be in here with work sessions.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, I've already discussed with Chief, Chief, Chief Kidd, um, if they need quorum, they can call me, I can run over there instead.
Wonderful.
Kind of conflicts.
Thank you. Design Review Board?
Uh, we have our next meeting, um, May thirty-first, we have a couple applicants sit there. Um, before we go on, council, I just want to thank you for going through the process of the appeal process. I know it's a hard decision that you guys had to make, and regardless of either way it was gone, I would have said the same thing, that thank you for going through that. This is the process, this is how we have to do it and this is how we do do it. And you guys did your due diligence tonight. Regardless of, either way, if it would have gone for or against, I would have said the exact same thing. This is what we're here for and this is what we're here on council to do, is to go through the process, listen to the information, and then make, make the decision. Again, I just want to thank you for going through that. I had to go through with the DRV, with, with the Design Review Board being there, and you guys got, you guys got to go through it tonight as well. Um, we will learn as we go too, that is how, things will change and how this appeal is done. We have done that already. Just thinking about what happened a year ago when we did, went through an appeal, much different tonight than it had before, the, the process. And so I like how we're moving forward, we are growing as a council, we're growing as a village and learning as we go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yu Daly. Economic Development Committee?
We meet tomorrow at eleven o'clock.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Um, finishing up the report section, moving out of, uh, we do not have a public hearing, but is there a motion to set the public hearing for the rezoning of Zero Lafayette Plain City Road Parcels, zero-two dash zero-zero-three-five-seven dot zero-zero-three and apartment number zero-two dash zero-zero-one-six-seven dot zero-zero-zero, PZ dash twenty-three dash one from Darby Township Agricultural District A1 to Planned Residential District PRD for June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sense?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yu Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
And is there a motion to set the public hearing for the rezoning of Zero US forty-two parcel number zero-four dash zero-zero-seven-seven-seven dot zero-zero-zero, PZ dash twenty-three dash three from Community Business District B-two to Planned Commercial District PCD for June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sense?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Yu Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yep.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
And is there a motion appointing Jamie Davis to serve as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Now, is Jamie also on the?
Design Review Board, yes.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say that too. I, I, I want to be very clear that I don't have anything against either these individuals, I actually don't know JB Davis, but I do know TJ. I just, I think it's a best practice to not have the same people on multiple boards. So in, if they were actually put onto planning and zoning, would you remove them from their current boards? Or are you thinking about having them on multiple boards?
So this is a temporary uh position because um for the Virginia Homes Beechey Farm, we have two planning and zoning members that are directly affected by, and it was um per our legal counsel suggestion to appoint um temporary, so they are only going on to planning and zoning to hear about this one case.
Okay, and is there a term called out in that way? Because I wouldn't write them as an alter, alternate, then I would say it's temporary.
Yeah, I would say temporary and put a date on that.
Um, is there a motion, so I'm trying to think, um, I look at, again at Mr. Hutchison for the planning and zoning process expiring in July, like July twenty-twenty-three?
Now, it'll go, it'll go through, well, it could be different on the cases through this little year or so.
Oh.
I put at least at the end of the year.
So then.
So if, if that's the case, I, I, again, I'm not.
I see your point of putting.
Yeah, but that's not really my problem. My problem with it is that they're already on DRV and I, I don't really want them on two different boards, so I.
And economic development.
Yeah, and TJ's on that count though.
Yeah.
It.
That is our, that is our issue.
So, so what, do you have a problem with the membership on, on the, what is it, planning and zoning? That you have to have members there and that's where you're coming up?
Yes, because two will abstain, so that, that will not give us the majority.
That won't give you a quorum.
The quorum, too.
They need a quorum, they'll be able to hear, I'm, I'm assuming.
Well, it didn't give us a quorum, but it limits us to three, one person knows absent that the meeting's.
Okay, so you have barely enough, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, if, for, when um our two members have, of planning and zoning have to step, like abstain from it, from the hearing and voting.
Oh, so you're gonna, well, I think I have a problem with this, Mayor, and, and, and it's probably the same, a similar or additional problem with, with uh, with that. So they have a problem because they have conflicts?
Well, they're, they serve on other coun- council committees currently. In our thought process with staff and myself, we said, we wanted people to understand how a committee works.
Right.
So we're not just putting a fresh person on that they understand the process. But I understand your concern, Mr. Terry, of having.
I mean, yeah, and, and I'm trying to think about solutions, um, would they temporarily step down from their other roles?
So what would that do to DRV then?
Right.
I, I, I think we should have a, a variety of offices. I think that what we should, I don't think that we should ever have multiple people outside of council members on multiple boards.
Which I understand that clearly. How, what if um we were to come back to the table and, and um, for like the June first work session, okay?
Up in here too.
Okay. No, I appreciate this openness. Sometimes, you know, when you think of something, you're like, that sounds like a great idea, but you don't, yes.
Well, I believe even our applicants, our application, it states, are you in another organization?
There are a lot of people here tonight, maybe one of them might have. Okay. Mayor, let me just.
You guys put a new person with the existing zoning, you're taking from there and then take your two, since you want to put a new person on that case, why not just get it separated?
Under, I understand that. Um, and Michigan, I, we have a visitor section, so yes, that's, I, we're deliberating.
I, I, I just want to follow through on this thing with the abstentions. You have, how many people on planning and zoning now?
There's five.
There's five, and a quorum would be three? Okay, so if, if, how many are there that cause a problem, are, are all five coming?
Not all the time, sometimes there's a lot of work.
Sometimes there's only four and two people abstain.
Yep.
I think the rules support you not needing the alternates because even though two people then vote, right?
You still need a majority, like.
You don't.
Regardless, I think it's best practice to have more than two voices as well.
Well, unless it's in the code that you need a number, a specific number of votes on Planning and Zoning, then a majority of whoever votes will carry whatever is business's head. It's not, it's not illegal to vote with two people. Okay, so the need for the alternates goes away then. So, don't be afraid to conduct business with only two people who can vote. I mean, they're there, they can, can, well, they shouldn't even be talking about the issue if they can't vote on it either. So, that's a problem. You should address that with the committee and get them to show up for the meeting so you have more. But that's my opinion anyway, that, that you do not have to worry about having a quorum voting. That's not a requirement. It's whoever there that votes is the majority of that number that, that we care, unless it's in the code that you have to have a specific number of votes.
We, we will, I will work with staff and, and reconvene for June 1st and have a solid, a solid answer.
And you should, you could check out with the solicitor also just to confirm that opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving into old business, second reading Resolution 17-23, adopting the Solid Waste Management Plan for the Allen Champagne Harden Madison Shelby Union Joint Solid Waste Management District. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 17, 2023.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. U. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
Second reading Resolution 18-23, establishing the Village of Plain City Tax Incentive Review Council.
Motion to approve second reading Resolution 18, 2023.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. U. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
Second reading Resolution 19-23, establishing the Village of Plain City Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council and appointing a housing officer.
And that's Jason, right? Mr. Stanford, sir? Motion to approve Resolution 19, 2023.
Second.